Please join me in flag slip as we open the meeting. Thank you for that. Everybody's here with the exception of Luke. I don't know. We'll see where he's at. He'll join us in a minute. Announcements, additions to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to add under presentations, Kim Dwyer to talk about the service integration team and the warming center.
Okay. Anything else? Is that it, Julia?
That is all.
Are there any declarations of ex-party conflict? Ex-party contacts, conflict of interest bias, et cetera? Here none? Opportunity for public comment? Before I read, before I call you up for public comment, I need to read the statement. Public comment, public comment opening statement. The council will now receive public comment. We value the time and initiative members of the public take to share their thoughts with the council. The council's role during public comment is to not immediately respond, but to listen. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct city staff to do so. Remember that we all model the way for our community and we ask that everyone share their thoughts respectfully. Those who have completed a request for recognition form will be called one at a time to step forward and state their name and city of residence. Please note, the speakers will have three minutes to express their thoughts. With that, we'll start with Mr. Loftus. Is your button on?
I want you to imagine if you were sitting in my seat. Okay? That you had an incident, not just one, but multiple incidents with our local law enforcement. One put you in fear of your life for simply exercising on your property. One of them was an encounter where you were put under unlawful surveillance. That same evening, you call 911 because you see a drunk, so drunk he can't even get in his car. And within a matter of minutes, law enforcement shows up. They interview him and tell him to get in the back of his car and sleep it off, putting the community at risk. I have him on video. If you'd like to come down and look at it, I'd be happy to share it with you because it's absolutely shocking that these officers use that discretion. Mr. Mayor, you had the courtesy to call me. I appreciate that. However, I did not get an answer to the question. And I'll put the question before the council. I really do not want to have to take legal actions. Yeah, in the beginning, I was extremely angry with how I've been treated. Okay? The retaliatory actions that have been taken towards me. The inaction from you, the council. No contact from the city. So I guess my question to you that you should ask the city attorney is if I file a tort claim and if I file a suit, then am I eligible at that point in time to go over the video with you? That's all I've asked at this point. Let's just go over the video and talk about the grievances that I have. And I'm met with silence. So what is your responsibility here? You just said with liberty and justice for all in your pledge of allegiance. You have leadership for your law enforcement that is very concerning to the point where on December 22nd, our museum was robbed. I didn't bother to call the police. Why? I have no confidence in them. The museum's not going to recover the material that was taken. I have him on video. He's well-known in the community. But he hasn't been taken off the street. So what's the point in calling the police if they're not going to do their job? All that person did was deprive children of opportunities that our museum provides to them. So if a police officer would like to contact me, I have video, but I doubt if anything will be done of it. I have no confidence at this point in the council or in the law enforcement. And I would really like to rectify that. Because it's really concerning when a citizen can't trust their council or the police. Thank you.
Thanks, Loftis. Mr. Loftus.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Orrick?
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Sure. James?
Has I have a question, Mr. Loftus. You said that you have not received any communication from the city or the police department. Is that correct?
In how to address this grievance, none. None other than an absolutes, absolution letter by the chief. When I wasn't filing a complaint, I was asking questions. So I have had communications, but not a protocol, not a process to rectify these grievances. No one from the city has contacted me. City manager, chief of police. This could have been resolved. When I called down the following morning and I asked, I demanded the chief show up at my restaurant. Okay? And explain to me how this could happen. That's all it needed. And instead, it was retaliatory actions against me.
But so you have had someone, you have had the chief answer, you had questions and you had her, she responded?
With a fabrication of reality that I do not acknowledge and I reject it in total.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, James. Mark Ferry.
Hello, counsel. My name is Mark Ferry. Many of you may know who I am. I really want to ask you guys if you guys are taking your job seriously.
Mark, what city do you live in?
I live outside of state in Oregon. I have a P.O. box here in Stateon. Is my light on?
Yep.
I want to bend forward.
Go ahead.
I have been ran trampled by your city. And everyone seems to be completely incompetent from my, from my viewpoint. As I look around, I see the disgust on your face. But I want to know how much disgust you all would feel if you were in my shoes. Somehow I've been treated terribly by your city and there's been zero accountability. And it surprises me that James has had the same experience. You know, contacting me and reaching out and like saying, hey, what can we do would be one thing. When I followed up on me being followed by a Sergeant Meeks on his days off, I had the police called on me and I was removed from City Hall by your city manager. I would officially like to figure out what I need to do to file a form of complaints against the city manager, against the mayor, against you, and against you. Why would you not respond to my emails is one thing. But when you make it apparent to the community that it's a joke to you, that you're laughing and snipping about it, what are you doing? Why did you sign up for your job, Steve? Why did you sign up to serve the people if you're not going to bother responding to my email as a victim? But then you're going to laugh and make fun of me about it for everyone in your community to see? Everyone on state and community pages saw your reaction to that and you didn't care. And you made it more than obvious. Why was the mayor unwilling to meet with me to discuss my issues of being followed daily unless it's off the record?
Here we go, Mark.
It's on, it's on the record that it was off the record. You would not meet with me unless it was off the record?
That's not.
That's derelict of your duties.
We're not going to.
That's not correct. You up here laughing. Last time I was here, James was, you know, presenting himself. You guys are up here eating popcorn, chewing with your mouth open, high-fiving each other. I watch city council videos in my free time. I watch audit videos. They take their job seriously. They're dressed up. They're not looking like buffoons. I want to know what you guys are doing.
All right, you're out of order now, Mark. We're not going to take personal insults, Mark.
Okay, well, let me just talk about my.
We're not going to let you talk.
Then I'll come back. I'll keep coming back.
There's no one up here that represents you not being a resident of the community.
I was followed daily by your police station.
You've been asked for repeatedly, for example after example and to.
I've given examples.
You've given me nothing, Mark.
I gave you an example. You told me to follow up and you didn't follow up.
You've given me nothing. We're done.
You didn't follow up.
Are you done with your comments?
You two insisted on meeting me at a bar, drinking beer, hopping in your cars and leaving. And you were surprised that I didn't feel comfortable drinking. Really, you guys were both surprised about that. I gave a specific date and time where I was followed for 20, 30 minutes. I gave it to Julia. She followed up with me and told me it was impossible that I was followed because it was his day off. So then I asked her, are your, are your vehicles, do they have GPS monitoring? Are your cell phones tracked? Is there tracking going on? Is there any accountability happening?
Time's up, Mark. Time's up.
I was reached with zero.
Time's up.
I'll be back.
Yep, I'm sure you will. With that, we'll move on to any public hearing.
No, there is not.
I do want to say one thing in regards to public comments, real quick. In regards to. You're done. You're done, Mark. You're done.
You're good.
See ya. Mark, please exit stage left. Please, please exit the building. Thanks. In regards to Mr. Loftus complaint, I did indeed follow up with him. And I will tell you that none of the body up on this council has the ability to waive state statute. The issue in question is ordinance number, Oregon Revised Statute 192-345. Anybody can look it up. That is a statute in question and that clearly outlines the steps necessary to obtain video camera footage from police body cams. So anyone wants to look that up here, you can do that. Anyone at home wants to look it up, by all means, please do so. In regards to last individual, we've asked for example after example and nothing's been produced to us. So we'll leave it at that. Moving on to general business. Charter review, discussion number section 34.
I'm sorry, I know that was a little unusual, but you have consent agenda and presentations first.
This is item number five, consent agenda from January 6th, city council regular session and January 21st, city council work session minutes. What council like to do?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty.
Counsel Patty, go ahead.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented to us.
A second.
Okay. Motion a second to approve consent agenda as submitted. Anybody have any further discussion? Falls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Now we'll do presentations. How about that?
Yes, and thank you for indulging me. I had wanted to ask Kim Dwyer to come do a presentation at some point with the warming center. And she said that she was going to be here this evening. And so I asked if we could add her to the agenda. So I just wanted to give her an update, have her give you an update on the warming center.
Hello, how are you guys doing? Great. So much pressure. You say presentation. So I'm just going to like shout out some numbers that I ran real quickly today. First of all, Kim Dwyer, San Diego Service Integration, thank you so much for the city of State and supporting the warming center that we've had here. So we've been open a total of 10 nights over what I call round one and round two. We will be starting round three tonight at 9:30. We've had 42 different volunteers, including many of you on the council. So thank you so much. We've had some volunteers cover 18-plus shifts. And so there's really a community, I love it because the community has taken this on as a project of its own. I just get to kind of organize and, and open the door and unlock, you know, lock the door. But I have some really strong community members that have really just wanted to make sure that this is open. So I'm very grateful for them. We have had 13 different individuals check in. So every night they come in and they check in just one time, even if they come and go, they just check in. So over those 10 nights, we've had 49 total check-ins. So I think that's a good number. And again, I think Julia and I have talked about this, even if we're serving one individual from freezing temperatures, I think we're doing a good thing. But those are the numbers I have. I am happy to try to answer any questions you might have. This round will be again, opening tonight. And then we'll open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, closing on Friday. That's my intention at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Kim, can you elaborate a little bit on the locations that you have? The warming center is not just this location?
It is just here.
It is just here?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I stand corrected then.
The only one I'm organizing is this one here. We do have, so I say we, there is San Diego Outreach Community Center in Mill City and they've been operating their own through Arches, so Community Action Agency. And I think they're at 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And just for the, anyone watching or listening, chariots will provide free transportation to anyone going into a warming or cooling center. The individual just needs to let the driver know that that's where they're headed to. And then they will take them back the next day as well. So again, they just need to let the driver know.
Thanks, Kim. Anybody else? Counsel Sam's?
I got to, I got to witness the warming center a little bit. So yeah, you're doing a great job. I think it's a really good thing and good job, good job. I know, I know you're working really hard.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Okay.
Thanks, Kim. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
So there is no public hearing?
That is correct.
And so we'll move on to general business, which is charter review discussion, section 34, and staff report with Ross.
Yes, and Ross is here virtually again. Is that, can you guys see okay? Or would you like us to lower the lights? Lower the lights a little bit? And then just as, as we're getting that, just as a reminder, I think this is the third, maybe the fourth section that we're taking, looking at the charter. Trying to dive into it a few pieces at a time. We're going to talk about this again at the next meeting in February. And then the plan is in March to kind of talk about all of the pieces and decide what, if anything, you want to put forward on a ballot. So take it away, Ross.
All right, thank you, Julia. Good evening, everyone. You rushed through your agenda so you get to me. I know. And you're all just waiting to talk about the city charter. So I'm happy to indulge. I do need the sharing. I have a PowerPoint presentation.
And as he's doing that, I'll just point out, I believe he will plan on staying through the end of the meeting, I hope, or at least with this message I'm asking him to, in case there are any questions from council at the end about any of the discussion this evening or other discussion.
Okay, great. All right, so here we are. Hopefully then, can I get a thumbs up? Has everyone seen this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we are talking about one, one charter provision tonight. We're talking about charter section 34, which is the city manager provision. And here's the roadmap, updated roadmap of where we've been and where we're going to go. We still have three sections we're going to talk about next time. And those are small sections, so it should. I've tried to break it up equally, so we'll spend about the same amount of time, even though it's over three sections next time. All right. So charter section 34 in your current city charter consists of four subsections. So we have subsections A through D. And these all concern your city manager position. The city council's employee, the city manager. So subsection A, this is your current charter provision and current section 34A. And it establishes the position of city manager as the administrative head of the city. And because this is your charter, I say that the city manager is what I call a charter level employee. So the people of Stateon have voted on this and they have decided to designate the position of city manager as the head administrator of the city. So the charter gives the city council authority, gives the mayor authority. And now the voters have given city manager certain authorities too. So this is again, a charter level position and 34A establishes that position. Subsection B, then this defines how you as a council appoint this position. So the charter creates the position and then it tells, tells us how to fill that position. And your current city charter says the mayor appoints and removes the city manager with the consent of a majority of the rest of the council. Subsection 34C then describes the duties of the city manager. So we have subsection A is the creation of the position, subsection D is how we fill it. And now subsection three is what they do. Well, it says, the city manager's duties are set forth by ordinance. So this kind of, this charter provision, 34C kind of punts the ball on this one. And so it directs you as a city council to adopt an ordinance to create the duties of the city manager. And you've done that. You have an ordinance in your code that says the city manager has certain duties that they have to fulfill as part of their job. All right, in the final section of your current provisions, 34D, this is a, a, a provision that prohibits certain conduct by the city council on the mayor. Basically, you're not allowed to coerce the manager about their functions as city city manager in terms of hiring and firing. So if you are walking into Julie's office and trying to support someone or coerce her into hiring or firing someone, that would be a violation of this provision. All right, so that's, that's the background. That's your current provision. And now a little bit of a history here for where this provision came from and how it's changed over the years. So as you may recall, your last charter review process was in 2018. This is section 34, it's just before that. So you had a city administrator prior to 2018. And the charter review process just carried that forward. But what they did was they changed the word, the position name from city administrator to city manager. I think that the term city manager is the more modern term, I would say, in terms of organ governance. And it's also maybe a more professional position description for the position of city manager versus city administrator. I will say that in 2018, the review committee considered adding job duties. So again, looking back at subsection C, that just said the duties of the city administrator or city manager are to be set forth in ordinance. The committee considered whether to expand that and to actually list the job duties in the charter itself. But they decided not to do that. So that was, that was a question for them in 2018 and they decided, no, we're going to keep it as it is. We're going to have the council define those job duties in an ordinance. All right. So now let's look at the model charter. And again, when I say the model charter, this is the legal organ cities' model charter. This is the document that they have created over the years and it gets refined every once in a while. And it is the legal organ cities' kind of amalgamation of kind of best practices or yeah, I guess best practices is a good word, best practices for a city charter. And the model charter, they actually set out. So this is the model charter, they call it subsection E. And it sets out all of the various duties of the city manager. And so it gets very specific. And I will not read these aloud, but it basically says, this is what the city manager has to do for us as the city council. They're going to enforce all the city ordinances. They're in charge of contracts. They're in charge of permit decisions. And appoint and supervise all the city employees. They organize city departments and the administrative structure. They prepare administrative budget and so on and so on. And so the model charter creates the, again, the charter level position of city manager. And then also assigns duties at a charter level. And I'm using that phraseology because it distinguishes between charter level job duties versus ordinance job duties. So the model charter has charter level duties and you all in the city have ordinance level duties. And because it's an ordinance level, the city council can amend those whenever they want. A charter level job description is something that only the voters can amend. And so it safeguards those job duties in the bucket of city manager in the role of the city manager. Whereas in ordinance level job duties, those can be, those can be changed from time to time as the council itself determines without the oversight of the voters. All right, so this brings us to my policy questions for you all. As you look at whether we want to talk anymore about section 34 or whether we want to move on to the others, whether we want to bring the voters and how we're bringing the voters. And I see two major questions for you all out of section 34. The first question is the appointment process. Now remember, your current appointment process in subsection B provides that the mayor appoints with council consent. The other option there is what the model charter says and that says the council points. Now you may ask, well, what's the difference? Well, in my mind, the charter provision that you all have right now is a mayor-driven process. Whereas the model charter is a council-driven process. So the council as a whole body under the model charter goes through the process of recruitment and hiring and firing a city manager. Whereas in the state charter, right now, it really is the mayor who presents a candidate and then seeks the consent of the council on that candidate. If the council doesn't like that candidate, then the mayor proposes another candidate. But it's the mayor who presents that, that candidate. And so it's a mayor-driven process. And I don't think one or the other is better. I'm just pointing out that this is a policy choice for you all about how you want your appointment process for the city manager to run. And I guess it kind of ties back to what we talked about last meeting, whether the mayor should be part of the council. Whether we bring the mayor into the council as a full voting member and defined as part of the council. And maybe part of that process means the mayor is just a member of the council. And so maybe the mayor shouldn't have a special, a special role in the appointment of the city manager. Again, I'm not giving any judgment there. It's just a, that's a policy question for you all. Second policy question is that second bullet. Where do we put the job duties? Do we want these job duties of the city manager to be charter level? Or are we okay with them being ordinance level? I guess I would say that a charter level job duty maybe creates a potential for some conflict between the council and the city manager. Because a charter level job duty is something that the council itself, as a political body, can't change. They belong to the city manager. They were given to the city manager as, by the voters. And only the voters can take them away. And so there is the possibility that you could have some political conflict between the city manager who says, I have these charter level authority and the city council says, I wish you didn't. We're going to go to the voters and try to take those away. But I think also, the flip side of that is it gives your city manager some cover from politics. So a city manager that has their job duties written in the charter knows that they're going to have those job duties. I would say, depending on politics in Stateon, your city manager may not know from month to month what their job duties will be because the council could always present an ordinance and amend the job duties. Either giving duties or taking them away. And so there's some, some potential uncertainty there in the role of your city manager about what their job will be in the, in the years to come. So that's the second policy question there. We do have one, one final policy question. And part of the reason that we're talking about section 34 is now former counselor raised the question of whether the council should have checks and balances on the administrative authority of the city manager. We didn't really get into what David's questions really were or what he was really looking for. But I just, because he raised those back when we had that work. for, but I just, because he raised those back when we had that session several months ago, I wanted to bring that question forward and see if anyone else on the council today thought that there was, it was worth discussing further. I'm not exactly sure what he had in mind, and I don't know where we would pull those ideas, but it seemed like he wanted maybe more council authority in terms of the administrative duties of the city manager, and I think maybe he referenced hiring and firing. So whether the city council as a body should have more oversight of what your city manager does on the operations side of things. So those are kind of the three policy questions. We have, again, I'll slide back. The appointment process, whether that's mayor-driven or council-driven. And then the second question is job duties, whether we put those in the charter or whether we keep them where they are in the ordinance. And then the third question is whether the council should have more checks and balances in terms of their oversight of the administrative authority of the city manager.
Thanks, Ross. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
Ross, I believe that, and I do not want to put words in former councillor Julia's mouth, but in having prior conversations, it was having to do with hiring and firing of employees, or having more discretion over what that looked like, specifically I, and how we might be able to change that. So it's not, if we want, like, because this has kind of been used, I feel like, maybe in the past, not saying Julia, but in the past, has been used as kind of like, oh, you can't talk to me about employees, or if there's any suggestions or concerns about someone that has been kind of like used as a tool to say, hey, you can't, you can't do that. And so I know that his question was specifically about I, and so if we can talk a little bit about that, and how, maybe what other cities are doing, and how that might look a little different.
Yeah, absolutely. And so the model charter is section I, and your charter is section D, and so it is the provision that says you as a councillor cannot coerce the city manager in making a hiring and firing decision. Now, the way that that provision has been drafted and the way it's been interpreted over time, what it really means is you can't show up at city hall and call a primary meeting with Julia and try to twist her arm on a hiring decision. So you can't go in there and say, well, I've got a cousin who is great at public works, and I think she would be fantastic as the new public works director, and I really need you to hire her as the next public works director. So that type of coercive, outside of the public setting discussions should not happen. You can always give direction to your city manager where you are right now, at a city council meeting. And this is the proper place to make those motions, saying, you know, hey, Julia, I think our budget is running too thick, we really need to cut down on the FTE, and so I, as a city councillor, really want you to cut costs and make some personnel decisions to save the city money in the following fiscal year. That is not coercion, that is just a public statement by a councillor. And I will also say that there are, I've seen examples from other cities that take a pretty broad stroke at what you have in subsection D. And so what you have in subsection D only concerns coercion of the city manager. There are other city charters that say coercion and discussion. They use the word discussion. You shall not discuss personnel decisions with the city manager. Well, I think that is probably too broad, in my personal opinion, and I think there's a judge recently that agrees with me. And so what you have here is only coercion, which is a pretty high bar. And what that is basically is you're really trying to twist the city manager's arm to do something they don't want to do for your interests or your benefit. So, and I don't know the full history of why this provision, this is a pretty popular provision across Oregon. But my interpretation of the provision is that it's intended to cut politics out of hiring and firing of personnel. And so, you know, you all are political beings, you run for office and you're elected, your city manager is supposed to run and administer the city in a non-political, apolitical way. And so they shouldn't be making hiring decisions based on politics, which kind of necessarily means they shouldn't be making hiring decisions based upon what they're hearing from an individual city councillor outside of a public meeting. And so the model charter kind of landed on this phraseology of using a pretty high standard of coercion, but then also allowing you all to have these broad discussions in a meeting. So again, you can tell Julia, hey, we disagree with some of your personnel decisions that you're making, we disagree on some of your funding decisions. You can have all of those types of discussions in a public meeting, you just can't have them in closed doors where you're trying to twist her arm. So it certainly is a policy question for you all of, do we want to cut this out? So you certainly could cut out subsection D. Again, I think the purpose of it is probably to try to keep politics out of city administration, but maybe based upon your experience, it's not a problem, and so we don't need to have that provision. Did that help at all?
Yes, but, so you, I, the term coerce, you're saying is a fairly high bar of, okay.
Yes, yes.
It doesn't inhibit discussions from happening? Okay.
That's exactly right. And so I will just say, I think I know about some of the history that you may be talking about, under prior administrations, where perhaps staff read this more broadly than I do. And so if I were consulted by Julia, I would say, it's okay if one of your city councillors comes in and starts talking to you about personnel. I have some, you know, maybe I'm a city councillor, and I have some experience in personnel decisions, and I want to come in and spend fifteen minutes in Julia's office and talk to her about my theory on personnel, my theory on hiring and firing, and how to find the best candidates, and that type of thing. I would never say that that's coercion. Again, I think coercion is when you go into the city manager's office and you are twisting her arm, making her, attempting to make her do something she doesn't want to do. Having a discussion, having a back and forth discussion about personnel matters is not coercion.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a follow-up?
Go ahead.
You, as a lawyer, like, deal in contracts all the time, so is there a way that we could put like a definition somewhere in the, is there like a definition page in the charter, or is there a way that we could put a definition for coercion? And the only reason I say that is because, like I said, this has been interpreted different ways, and it's been told to people different ways, and so just to have some sort of like, okay, this is, this is the rules that everybody's playing by, this is the intention of what this means, so that we're all clear, and it's not like someone can, you know, say, well, you're trying to coerce me, you know, by what you're doing, and it's like, well, actually, that's, right here, this is not what I was doing, type of thing.
Yeah, that's absolutely a policy call that you all could make, and that is something, you're absolutely right. Coercion is subject to interpretation. In my mind, I look at this, your provision that talks about coercion, and I compare it to other city charters that use other words, like discuss. And I say, well, that charter says discuss. We say coerce. Those are different terms, and so they can't mean the same thing. But you're absolutely right. So if we want to enshrine that thinking, you can. And so we could provide a definition of what coercion means, absolutely.
Hey, Ross, I got one for you. I think part of this questioning with councillor Julia in the past might have been in reference to having the council participate in recruiting of department head levels. That makes sense. And so in a meeting such as this, we could ask Julia, hey, we would like to see the zookeeper recruitment be, the council wants to be involved in the zookeeper recruitment. That's not coercion, that's just a quest in a public meeting to be involved in that process. Anything wrong with that?
So maybe there are two questions there. There's no problem with having that discussion in a public meeting, but I guess, I don't know if you actually were asking the question, is there a problem with having the council involved in the recruitment of the zookeeper? You know, there's not necessarily a problem with that. There could be a problem if we're actually creating a committee of the council and having that committee work with Julia in terms of that recruitment, because then we would have public meetings, so that would be a potential problem. We also have, and I guess this gets a little bit to where are the job duties? So since you don't have your job duties in the charter, one of the regular job duties that's usually found in the charter is hiring and firing, firing and personnel decisions. And so if that's a charter level job description, then I would say Julia could invite someone from the council to be involved, but I don't think the council could direct that someone from the council be involved.
Okay.
Yeah, Ross, I don't know that I have a question at this point. Are we ready for kind of discussion a little bit about this, or what do you think? Okay, cool. So I just want to go ahead and kind of give the rest of the council a little bit of background on this, at least for me. Six years ago, when I first started, I felt very differently about 34D than I do now. The reason being is you'll have a lot of people approach you as a councillor complaining about individual staff members, individual department heads, and ultimately, there's not a lot we can do about that in the way of taking personal actions. That's something that we have to give to Julia. And for me, in my first six years, it was very frustrating hearing that, and then, you know, on the other hand, hearing from constituents frustrations, and then feeling like I could not have an outlet for that to management. And I would say very much so, I don't feel that way with you, Julia, so I first off want to compliment you on that. However, I absolutely agree with councillor Orr, we need to enshrine this somewhere, where exactly, we know what coercion means, and what we want this to be, and what we don't want this to be, because I felt very intimidated when I first started as a councillor about 34D and what I could even ask, quite frankly. And so that's where this is coming from to you new councillors, I want you to understand that. I personally don't think that we should remove 34D because of my consternation with it, but I do think that you all should understand what conversation we're having here. And I think it's important that we do have that in place, because I think these department head positions should be insulated from politics, personally. That's my own personal opinion, after six years and a lot of trial and error, but that's personally where I land on this issue.
Councillor Orr.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add to that, because the questions that I ask or the things that I say, they're not, it's not necessarily just thinking about the situation that we're in, it's looking at past instances or performance, and looking forward to, if we're making changes to this, what is this going to look like in the future, and what does it look like, sometimes unfortunately, in the hands of bad performers? So I really want to make sure that if we're doing this, we look at it thoughtfully and figure out how we, if we tweak it or we make changes, like, make sure that they are ones that are positive, and that really add to the city in helping it move forward, and looking at like, okay, not just when everything is good, but when, you know, giving people leverage to possibly do the wrong thing, that's not my intention here. That's not what I do. Also, in the model charter, it's under C, it says the manager need not reside in the city, and, I think maybe this is a question, I know that when we were going through the last city manager process, we said that we want the city manager to live in the city limits, but I want to know what your, your thoughts are on changing that to the city, like, enshrining it in the city charter, that the city manager needs to reside in the city limits.
I definitely would like to...
I'm sorry to clarify, in the model, it says the city manager not, need not. So I guess I would want, Ross, my understanding, and this is from literally decades, is that it's actually not legal, but maybe I just don't, didn't know. Ross, can you speak to that as the, like...
Yeah, so it is legal to require your city manager. So Julia, I think that applies to certain other positions, but the appointee of the city council can have some requirements on residency. And many cities do have requirements for residency. Just recently, maybe a year ago, one city, the residency requirement was in their employment contract, so it wasn't in the charter itself, but it was in the employment contract for their city manager, and they changed it because the city manager was having a hard time finding housing in the particular city. And so they expanded it. I think it was within the city or within 20 minutes drive of the city, or something like that. So, you know, I think one of the issues with the residency requirement is you are potentially shrinking your pool of candidates.
Councillor Sims. In answer to your question, councillor Orr, I would like to see the city manager, like, have a time limit of six months or something to move into the city. I think they have skin in the game if they live here, personally.
So just, does that need to be in the charter, or can that be in the contract? Because that was a part of my contract, I think.
Mr. Mayor, it's councillor Paddy.
Councillor Paddy, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I personally, as a person who's been negotiating this position, I really think that this is a useful piece to place in contract language instead of charter language, because this is kind of more foundational, and it has less flexibility, and we can't change it down the road. And I feel like, given all the what-ifs here that we're even just like thinking about, the six-month and everything, I think that this would be better served by putting it in contract with the city manager than actual charter, personally.
Yeah, that sounds good. I mean, I agree with that, that's fine. Okay, we're not there yet anyhow, so. Luke, anything?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I think I agree with Mr. Sims on that. They do have skin in the game if they're living here, I think they're going to take their job a little more serious, but I don't think we should shrink our pool either. The person with the best credentials, I believe, should have an opportunity to take the position.
Okay, thanks. So it sounds like we'll put it in contract then? We'll talk about it, I mean, we're not there, right, but that's what the general consensus is. Okay? Anything else for Ross?
So, Mr. Mayor, under the agenda, there's a public comment section, so just want to make sure, sorry.
It's an opportunity for a public comment for what we're discussing right now, so anyone would like to weigh in, come on up? Have a gentle conversation. Doesn't sound like there is any, okay, any more council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Mr. Sims, go ahead. So I got a question...
So I got a question about the hiring of department heads again, I guess, so we could actually put that in the charter, so the council, can the council have a final say on the hiring of department heads, or I mean, is that something we could put in the charter or ordinance, I guess, or? I don't know, just, it seems like there should be some say with department head level hirings.
You know, I think that's a total policy call for you all. Right now, the job duties of the city manager are in ordinance, and I don't have them in front of me right this second, but I think it talks about hiring and firing of all employees. And so right now, the city council has delegated all of that authority to the city manager. You could claw back some of that authority. And so if you wanted to say, in the ordinance, as it's written right now, city manager shall hire and fire all city employees with the exception of department heads which shall receive city council final approval, or something like that. You know, so you do have some authority to claw some of that authority back. You wouldn't have that authority if the job duties, if you borrow the model charter and put those job duties in the city charter. Because those job duties from the model charter say that the city manager is in charge of operations and administration, including hiring and firing of personnel. So if voters put that in the charter, then you wouldn't be able to have that authority as a council.
Thank you, thanks Ross, that's really helpful, that clarifies that completely.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Carey? Steve, I agree with what you're saying there, I think it should be, the council should be allowed in a situation like that, but I think ultimately it should come down to the manager, because we don't work day by, or day to day with personnel she'll be hiring. I think the manager should manage and have that opportunity as well to make the final decision, especially if it's somebody she's working close to or close with.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think that's it. Thanks Ross, appreciate it. So are we making an actual dis, no, we're not, correct?
I think you've given some feedback, I guess Ross, do you want to summarize any, the feedback you got or ask any clarifying questions that then we'll come back again in March and kind of discuss all of them? But Ross, do you want to kind of summarize what you took away?
Kind of point of order, are we going to have, we ask questions, are we going to have council discussion?
That's what we've been doing.
I have some more then.
Go ahead, Counsel Orr.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we didn't, Ross had some specific things that he suggested, so the majority, so, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. B, either the mayor points or the council points, I'm just going to say that I don't necessarily have a, an opinion on that. I think, I think as the mayor, I think having that responsibility is one of the reasons you get to be mayor. So I think that, you should keep that. And then, I apologize, which one am I looking at? And then, oh, the job duties, the charter level or the council, or the ordinance level, I think I'm of the opinion that I like to keep that at the ordinance level, because we have, I understand the pros and cons, but in my mind, we have, this process is a lot harder for us to do if we want to make changes. And I like to keep that as a council. If we have authority over this position, I want to be able to say what the position does.
Sounds good. I think we're going to be coming back to this, right? So, okay Ross, one more time. Any summary?
Well, no, so I think Counselor Orr beat me to it. Those are the questions I have for you all. My main takeaway for today is, yes, you want to talk about section 34. And so at the end of this process, we're going to talk about all the various sections that we talked about and wanted to talk about further. And then we'll have, I'll try to break out key policy questions for each section, and then we can go through those and see where we are in terms of whether we pose anything for the voters or not.
Okay. Counsel, good with that? Awesome, thanks Ross.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. That leaves us to council liaison and staff report with Julia.
Yes, so this, I'm just asking for direction from council. Two years ago, we established council liaisons to different boards and commissions, but they, we've had a change in councils, and so essentially, I'm just asking for input of whether or not we want to maintain those liaison assignments, and then who, whether or not people are going to continue in those assignments, or whether or not we switch folks around. In your staff report packet, page eight, it lists what the current assignments are as of, I guess, I don't know what ordinance we adopted that by, but, so the planning commission, Steve Sims is the liaison, parks and rec board, Ben McDonald was, library board is Jordan, sewer committee, which is the state and sublimity sewer meetings, is Mayor Quigley, public arts commission, which I didn't realize that we actually had assigned you to that, I thought that we hadn't, is David Paddy, school board is David Paddy, which actually is the same night as the arts commission now. That's why you're not there, yeah. The chamber board was David Gilio, the Saniam hospital board was Mayor Quigley, but I'm not sure, I don't know if that's been, if those meetings have been held.
I expressed my interest to Mr. Pritchard again, so.
And then revitalized downtown statin is Jordan Orr. My hope when we did these is that counselors would go, share anything that's happening at the council level with the board, and then share back at council anything that was happening at the board level. I have been and will continue until you guys decide to do differently, just under my announcements, giving an update of what the different boards and committees are doing, but it would be great if that became a council thing. So with that, I'll leave it to you to decide how you might want to divvy up the liaison assignments.
Okay, before we start, is there any public comment on this? Anybody itching to volunteer for something? Guess not.
And just as a reminder, there isn't a liaison to the budget committee, because you're all on the budget committee.
That's correct, thank you.
Since we have so many budget committee members here.
All right, counsel, I'll start off. I think I'm going to retain my position on the sewer committee, because it's pretty important. Not that you guys aren't engaged in that level, but it's already, already pretty thickened to the discussion, so I'm going to retain that if I could. And I also retain my hospital board representation and open to anybody else that wants to do anything else. Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, Mr. Sims.
So, I mean, I would love to stay on the planning commission myself, and I would be happy to take over parks and rec, that is close to my heart. So I'd be happy to take, take that one over.
Okay. Anybody really want that position? Arm wrestle with Mr. Sims?
I don't want to fight you.
Okay. Thanks for doing that, Steve. So we have Steve on planning and parks, that puts us down to library. Anybody? Jordan?
That has been my assignment. I, sorry Janet, I have not been able to make those meetings. I have a lot of commitments with my children and, I'm having a hard time with that.
Sure, no problem.
If anybody wants it, I will keep it, I can, I'm still willing to be the point person with the library, so, but I just can't commit to being at every meeting. That's where I'm at.
Okay, no problem. I'll put a little asterisk behind that for right now. Public arts, Mr. Patty?
Yeah, I'm happy to keep going with this, but I just wanted to check in real quick, though, given that, you know, Luke Bauer is on council, I don't, I know you have children, do they go to the school district here?
They go to the St. Mary's.
Oh, okay. I was just, the reason I'm asking that is because my kiddos don't go to the school board or the school district here, and I thought maybe if somebody else had kiddos there. But I'm happy to continue that on, just to be honest with you guys, that's quite a commitment, it's monthly. And I go and I present, you know, whatever's burning in our council agenda for the moment and try to present information and be a gate, you know, just free flowing with information to the board and the board members when they have questions. And so I really enjoyed that, but given that it coincides with the public arts commission, I'm okay giving that up if somebody wants it.
David, what's that committee look like? Is there a lot of involvement?
So for the school board?
Arts.
That's a good question, I've never been to a meeting yet.
Oh, you haven't?
No, uh-uh.
You want to get a detailed explanation of what that commission looks like?
I'd like to know what that looks like.
I'll tell you exactly. Mr. Raba, can you come up and tell us what the arts commission's all about?
And at the same time, I do have a gentleman I'd like to approach, regarding that, that's Paul, you know, I know he lives out of our city.
Hi guys, I'm Nick. Thank you. So the arts commission, I joined it recently, and it's a good group of people that we're trying to raise awareness and bring to the city art. Right now, there hasn't been much art within the city outside of the library's efforts, which they have done a fantastic job with. They have an art show coming up. But we're talking about also reaching out to the schools, bringing the youth, figuring out if murals are something for our community or different sculptures, different art walks and events. Those are the type of discussions that we've been having, and we're definitely would love to have you come to our meetings.
And I'll also add, it's a fairly new committee, the other committees were well-established, this is a committee that had been on the books, but, and actually, people had been appointed to them, but they had never actually had a meeting until maybe six months ago. And so they're getting up and forming, they established their mission and goals and bylaws, I believe, and so now they're just sort of starting to do more of the work. So it's, it's an exciting time to be part of this committee as well.
You guys are selling it well. I do have a question, though, I think if we were to, if I were to be this liaison, I would really like to have a one-on-one with Paul, who does not live in the city of statin, you know, to be part of that group. I think he'd be a great mentor for that group, when you mentioned murals, he's a master. And I think if we had his input on that board, I'd like that opportunity.
So you can recruit him to apply to be on the board, we amended the board rules recently to allow members to not be statin residents, they just need to be business owners or residents or property owners in the city. And so there are currently two vacancies on the board, and so that'd be great if...
And we're not talking just artwork, we're talking photography, art, all that involved? Okay.
Sounds like you did two with one stone. You was committed, and you committed to get another member.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks Nick, appreciate it. So, is that what I'm hearing? All right, so we'll put down Mr. Carey for the arts commission. And that leaves Mr. Patty still on the school board, or would you like something different?
If anybody wants to fight me for it, I'm happy to go ahead and seat it over to them. To be honest with you, I'm kind of looking at the chamber board and wondering about that since Mr. Gilio is no longer going to be doing that.
Okay, yeah. I will offer to assist you with the school board a bit, makes it a little easier.
Thank you.
When I can, yeah, just let me know. Mr. Bauer, any interest with anything?
Well, lots available.
I don't want to leave them out there.
Do you want to do the chamber board?
Is the RDS, you need someone for that?
Sure, you can do that.
Yeah, sign me up for that.
Counsel Orr?
I willingly give it everything.
Sounds good, there you go.
I'm telling you, I, it's not my, it's not that I don't want to do these things.
Mayor, Counsel Carey, one of the advantages for the chamber board is, I believe, they meet Wednesday mornings. So that's, when I was on the board, we used to meet at, I believe, not, or 8:30.
Okay, good point.
Sorry, is that the board meeting or the business?
Typically, it's our board meetings, for the chamber.
But the Wednesday networking meeting is Wednesdays as well, right?
Maybe it is Friday, maybe I'm speaking out of line, I've been gone too long. But yeah, it's a morning meeting. And we can clarify that with Carmel. Thank you, Julia.
Thanks.
All right, so we have one unfulfilled slot in the chamber, is that right? Am I reading this right? All right, so we can come...
I guess, I thought I heard Counselor Patty volunteer for the chamber.
Oh, you did, okay, good, no.
It is Friday mornings, yes.
All right, so we got Counsel Patty on there. Is that all of them for now?
So, do, you want me to recap what I heard?
So I'll tell you what I got real quick. Planning commission, Mr. Sims, parks and rec, Mr. Sims, library, we have open, asterisk, Counsel Orr, okay? Sewer committee, myself, arts commission is Ken, Mr. Carey, school board is Mr. Patty and myself, chamber board, Mr. Patty, hospital board, myself, and then revitalized downtown is Mr. Bauer. Cool, so that's all of them.
Great.
Anything else? All right, communication from city staff, Julia?
I have a lot, so bear with me. Do we want to start with the crosswalks? So Chief Johns is not here this evening, as you can see, so she's going to give a more robust update at the next meeting on what they've been doing in regards to crosswalks and crosswalk enforcement. I've mentioned in emails and I think my weekly update that the police have been doing much more focus of crosswalks, but also, we wanted to increase education. They have reached out to the schools and principals of the different schools to make sure that the students and crossing guards have some, some information and education about the crosswalk safety, but we also wanted to put together a video that we can put out there, just to provide some education, and so we're going to share that. This is not public yet, so if you have thoughts or comments, we'd really appreciate them, but we wanted to share the video that, that has been put together. Maybe?
Crosswalks are an ever-present aspect of roadways that have their own laws that must be adhered to by drivers and pedestrians. While there are similarities, the laws are unique to each state and may change over time. Having a clear understanding of the laws in Oregon helps ensure the safety of those in and around crosswalks. In Oregon, pedestrians are not considered crossing until a part of the pedestrian moves into the roadway. This includes wheelchairs, canes, bicycles, and other extensions of a person. Once a pedestrian is in the crosswalk or demonstrates the intent of crossing, vehicles must yield in the lane the pedestrian is crossing, in and any adjacent lanes. Always cross with caution, whether legal or illegal, it is irrelevant to the laws of physics. Make sure to check for speed and distance of any nearby vehicles before crossing. The state police department hopes that this information will help keep you and others safe while traveling. You can learn more about crosswalk laws with resources provided by the Oregon Department of Transportation. You can also learn more about what the city is doing to improve streets and crosswalk safety by checking out our website or subscribing to receive email updates. Safe travels.
And while not up yet, we plan on having a landing page that will include information about the safe streets, or safe routes to school grant that we just recently received word of at the Third and Fern Ridge, as well as the county's grant that they received at First and Locust, and then also information about the safe streets for all planning grant that will evaluate and hopefully get more resources out there. So that's, that's kind of what the, that landing page that's referred to is all about.
I do know that there's been flyers administered to the, distributed to the schools.
Oh, yeah, good. Comments on that? Okay. Okay. I wanted to give you, and you'll be getting something probably in your email later this week that's more comprehensive, but just acknowledging the Detroit Dam drawdown and our concerns about that and the impact to our water supply. So Barry Buchanan, who's the consultant working with us in Public Works, has extensive experience in water, used to work for the City of Salem Water, as well as water departments outside the country. So he's helping to coordinate and discuss, there have been meetings with the City of Salem, the City of Staton, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers last week, where he's contacted all of the cities that are impacted or potentially impacted. We're working with our lobbyists at the federal level, as well as preparing information with Representative Deal to make sure he has our information, as well as identifying potential solutions if we aren't able to not have the drawdown, kind of how we make sure that we protect our water supply. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and let you know about that, and there will be more detailed information coming, but I wanted to see if there's any initial questions on that.
Julia, just FYI, the Canyon Mayors are meeting a week from tonight. At Sublimity DMV Office, 6 to 8:30, I think.
Okay. Yeah, Mayor Trent mentioned that at the Merkley meeting yesterday, so. And let me know if there's anything that you need, I'll get you a bunch of information before that, too. Reminder, goal setting is this Saturday, 8:30 to 3:30. Kim handled the sit stuff. I just wanted to give you an update on the different boards and commissions. At the last Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use for car sales at First and Ida. It's going to, I think, be a fairly small location, but for any outdoor sales, it requires a conditional use. The Arts Commission discussed putting out a survey. They're also discussing integrating art in public spaces and contacting teachers in schools. The Parks Board is meeting tomorrow and they're going to be discussing parks assessments and potential recommendations for the budget going forward. They're also discussing a walking guide for parks and maybe a guided walk and potential recommendations for changes to street trees and tree removal policies. And then Library Board, I am not certain about when they're meeting next. I'm sorry, Jan is coming up, I'm catching her off guard.
The Library Board meets on the 19th. At the last meeting, they looked at levy scenarios and we looked at that together and then talked about that 19th is the night of the open house, so we'll do open house before, so asking them to come to that, so.
And I think that's actually all that I have. I thought I had more, but that is all that is on my list. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor? Okay, I know you asked when you were doing the crosswalk, but I kind of thought about it. So it talks about safe crossing, but what about, like, what the cars are supposed to do when someone's in the crosswalk? Because isn't there, like, you're not supposed to enter the crosswalk until they're at a certain point, or not until they get to the other side, or what does that look like?
So it did say it on there that, I mean, because I was watching for that as well, when you step in there, the vehicle isn't supposed to proceed until they're finished crossing, but we can make sure that's a little bit more. Would it be possible to watch that again?
Sure.
I'm sorry. It wasn't very long, so.
Yeah, I have a question about that, too. I think you said the word intent, so I, that, we need clarification on that when we watch it again.
Crosswalks are an ever-present aspect of roadways that have their own laws that must be adhered to by drivers and pedestrians. While there are similarities, the laws are unique to each state and may change over time. Having a clear understanding of the laws in Oregon helps ensure the safety of those in and around crosswalks. In Oregon, pedestrians are not considered crossing until a part of the pedestrian moves into the roadway. This includes wheelchairs, canes, bicycles, and other extensions of a person. Once a pedestrian is in the crosswalk or demonstrates the intent of crossing, vehicles must yield in the lane the pedestrian is crossing in and any adjacent lanes. Always cross with caution, whether...
So does that answer your question?
I mean, so the person hasn't stepped into the cross that they intend to, it makes it, it's a little confusing, I think.
Could there be, like, captions?
Oh, yeah.
都会有 captions on the, that I think may be helpful, but it also said, "in your lane" or "the adjacent lane."
So maybe some visuals that show that?
Maybe, yeah, like, I don't want to assume people don't know what adjacent means, but that, sometimes people don't know what adjacent means.
Yeah.
But just making that clear.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Yeah. And Mayor Quigley, I will, like I said, Chief Johns will be here next meeting and will give more information and I'll ask for some more clarification on what, how that is regulated in courts or in decisions or anything like that, if there's anything.
Sure, and I really think that might be a misconception.
Yeah.
If I'm standing there waiting to walk across the street, I intend to walk into the crosswalk. But that doesn't matter, because I have to put my foot in there, then we have an issue, so.
Yeah.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Regarding the Detroit Dam drawdown, last, when was it? When did we go to the LSC conference?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Last Tuesday.
Oh, my gosh. That was a week ago. Okay, so Counselor Sims and Counselor Carey and I went to the League of Oregon Cities Legislative Days, which is an opportunity to learn how to interact with our state legislators, which is really cool. And we got to speak with Representative Deal and Senator Gerard, and we spoke specifically about the Detroit Dam drawdown, and he requested that we send information, we talked about this, but information that we had about how it would impact us to the Army Corps of Engineers and then to also CC him. I know we spoke about it, so you already did that?
Yes, and we are preparing a letter and we will, we will absolutely do that, and I, yeah, he reiterated that as well, and we will, and I will also CC all of you, so you know what we've said.
But that was a, yeah, that was a big deal and definitely lots of people have eyes on that, so.
Okay, opportunity from communication from Mayor and Council. Councilor Art started, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Sims.
I had a couple of things. So I want to go back to something that's come up at a couple of previous council sessions, the visibility on Brett Court and West Town Drive. Have we looked into that at all and talked about, you know, options that are available with that, or?
So we've looked into it, but not enough for me to do anything. Staff did go out shortly after that first meeting where it was brought up and provided some information and just frankly, I haven't had a chance to do anything more with it. I do intend to, it's on my list, it remains on my list after, it was brought up at a recent meeting as well. So that's...
Sorry for not warning you about that question.
No, no, that's okay. No, 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 that's fine.
It popped into my head, so.
Yeah, it is, there has been stuff done, but not enough to have done, to made it, to make any recommendations or decisions at this point, but I do, it is on the list of things that I need to fix.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious about what the options are and what we can do with that intersection, because I've driven through there myself and it's pretty treacherous, so.
Yeah, I have as well, you know, certainly several times after it was brought up at the last meeting. And it is interesting, there is that sort of just stretch where there's cars on the street, but there aren't, you know, throughout the other areas. So I, yeah, it is something that I will look at. I don't know whether or not it's just a no parking, whether or not when we do West Town improvements, if there's opportunities there for us to do something that will help, so I just need, we need to look at it a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to piggyback on that question real quick, or concern. Had a gentleman approached me the other night in the, coming down the hill on 10th Street, Hospital Hill, towards Fern Ridge, in a smaller car. The bushes, trees, whatever, residential trees, need to be cut back. How can we approach that without having to pull out and open past the white line?
So coming down 10th towards...
Fern Ridge.
Fern Ridge, okay.
Oh, I know it.
We could certainly have, I mean, I guess there's, a start would be having code enforcement and/or someone from Public Works look at it and see where the issue is.
Because in a truck, it's not a problem, but in a smaller car, you get down and your front part of your car is past the line and you're almost in the intersection.
Do you know any more specifics about where the concern is, or will it be...
It's right on that corner, as you look west.
Okay.
And some east as well, because there's some trees there.
So we'll look at that and see where the, see where the issue is and whether or not it's a site clearance issue that can be easily addressed through code enforcement, or if it's a little bit more nuanced. We did have a situation that was, I think, temporarily resolved, coming off a gardener on Shaft, where it didn't, it wasn't in violation of a vision clearance issue, but we were able to send a letter to the property owner, and it was the apartment complex, and ask them to, when they had their landscaping crews come out, put that, you know, put that down. So it wasn't really an enforcement issue, but it was an ask, and they were able to do that. So we'll see what the issue is and see how we can fix it.
Counselor Sims, go ahead.
And I had one more thing just to say, and I'm not trying to steal the mayor's thunder, but the If I Were Mayor contest, Julia, Christian and I went to the fourth and fifth grade assembly and then we did a sixth through eighth grade assembly. And hopefully, just push the contest, I think there was a lot of excitement. I'll tell you what, once those kids start asking questions or stating their thoughts of what they would do as mayor, I mean, I could have gone on for two hours. They had to stop me in both, both sessions. Some of the things they said just makes you shake your head and laugh and smile, and it was really great. I was really impressed by their intelligence and they listen to their parents, I'll tell you that. The stuff they were saying is, they are listening to what their parents say. So I just, I just want everybody to try to, you know, push people to put in a poster or an essay for sixth through eighth grade, or the video for the high school kids, because I think it's a really good contest, there's really, there's a lot of really smart kids out there at those, and they said some really smart things. That was all I had.
Awesome, thanks for doing that. Anybody else? Councilor?
Mr. Mayor, I know, I have a lot as well, I have two more things. Okay, we kind of talked about this before, but I wanted to bring it up again because I don't feel like we came to a consensus. So the pool is one of our only, actually this building as well. So the community center and the pool are two of our assets that we don't have under any sort of commission or board. And so my, because it's part of the levy, my initial thought was that it could possibly go under the Parks and Rec Board, but, or it needs its own board or something like that, but there's no, there's no community, there's no opportunity for community input in dealing with the pool or the community center. And while this isn't maybe the prettiest space, it has opportunities here and I would love to see it more utilized. So with that, I would like to know what your guys' thoughts or ideas are on creating a board, or I'm not necessarily, I don't really want to do that, actually, I would just like to put them under Parks and Rec, but that's where I'm at. Thank you.
So moved.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I completely agree with that. I'm appreciative that you identified this gap in, I don't know, citizen engagement opportunities, so thank you. That seems like a really natural fit, because it's really hard to stand up a new committee for anything, as we all painfully are aware.
Absolutely, and I understand, don't, if you're on the Parks and Rec Board, don't freak out, please. I understand that you might not know anything about the pool per se, but this is an opportunity to...
Still recreation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it's still recreation.
Counselor Sims?
Hey, I would love to see it under Parks and Rec, I think that's a great idea. Like, it's, it'd be really good for the pool and advertisement and getting the word out.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Carey?
As we get ready to close, I want to keep this in the forefront, and that's our application for sidewalk vendors.
Yep.
Just want to get that.
That is scheduled to be on the next agenda, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me just one more time. I would like to ask Ross a question that was asked during public comment by Mr. James Loftus. He asked us to ask Council, or our Council, if he files a suit, can he have access to the video? And that's the question, but also can you preface it? The mayor alluded to this, but can you explain the backstory on why we are not giving him the video? Or are not?
Why it's bad policy to give body cam footage?
Why it's bad policy, yes. Can you please do that?
Yes, so we have, he made a public records request for the body cam footage. And the city denied that request under the statute. The default under the statute is to, is that body cam footage is exempt from disclosure. In order to undo that default, there needs to be a public purpose and a public benefit to the general public, not just a single member of the public. So that's what the legislature has told us. And what we are seeing from the Attorney General and from district attorneys who rule on these matters is that there is a significant public interest in keeping body cam footage in that default category as exempt, as not disclosed. And the bait and the, you know, the number one reason is the relationship between your law enforcement and the general public, especially the general public who is someone making a complaint or speaking to a police officer, maybe in a stressful situation. If everyone knows that those body cam videos will be put on the internet as soon as they're completed, then the relationship between our law enforcement and the public loses a whole bunch of trust. And the ability for the public to speak candidly and honestly with our law enforcement is severely diminished. And so you will see body cam footage in Oregon on the internet, but that is related to situations where the public has an interest in that particular activity. So for instance, we saw a lot of body cam footage from City of Portland when there were riots going on, because that was a huge public incident and the public had an interest in seeing how their law enforcement interacted in that public setting. When we have one-on-one situations between a complaining party or a witness with a single law enforcement officer, law enforcement is trying to get the right answer, they're trying to get honest answers from the public. And if the public sees the video cam and knows that it's going to be released, then our witnesses clam up and our complaining parties walk away. And so that is, that's the paramount interest that we're talking about.
Thank you, Russ. And then, if he files suit, can he have access to the video?
Well, I'm, you know, I'll be honest, I'm not going to answer that question. So that's legal advice, he needs to have an attorney and talk about it. If he sues the city, then all of our records are subject to discovery and the discovery process. And your litigation attorney from your insurance carrier will litigate that issue with his insur, with his attorney. that issue with his, with his attorney, and that will be a matter for discovery and a matter for those two attorneys. I really don't think it's appropriate for me to offer Mr. Loftus a legal opinion about what he should be doing.
I will say that he has not followed the procedures. In the letter that was sent in response to his public records request, we told him it was denied, but the process to appeal that is through the DA, and he has not done that. So that would be the next logical step, is to go to the, that process, and then potentially go to, to court if he feels that he still isn't getting the answer that he wants.
And Julia, if I may, you know, Counselor, I'm really proud of you in your question of Mr. Loftus and the facts that you brought out. So what we learned tonight is that he has received correspondence, he has received responses from the city, he just does not like them, and so your staff has been responsive, has done lawful, what is required under the law, to respond to Mr. Loftus, he just does not like our responses, and so he is telling you that we have not responded. That, that's just blatantly not true, because we have written records of our responses.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Counselor Patty, thank you very much.
Hey, Ross, I just wanted to clarify something, it was not this meeting, it was probably a couple of public comments ago, I lose track if I'm being honest. At some point, we heard about some sort of deadline he has approaching or encroaching, may have already passed, I don't know, is that with the DA's office, or what's he, I don't know?
So if someone wants to sue the city for a tort, there is a deadline within which they must give what's called tort claim notice. I have not calculated what his deadline is, that's for him to figure out, but that is, a tort claim notice deadline is likely approaching for him, yes.
Thank you, Ross.
Anybody else for Ross? Thanks, Ross. All right, that leaves me, I guess. I got a few things. Let me start off by saying that our discussion with Sublimity on the wastewater treatment plant issue and contract and all that's been pretty revealing, to the point where we're going to have further discussions, I'm sure, about certain things, but it calls the light the folks that work at the sewage treatment plant. How many of you folks have been out there and really understand what happens when we flush the toilet? Yeah, so I want to make sure those folks get the recognition, the acknowledgement that they deserve for taking and processing all that, once we flush the toilet. I don't think that the team gets enough recognition for what they do out there, so my hat's off to them, I know they do a lot of work to try to make sure that they process it, number one, but number two, that they stay within the confines and the regulations for DEQ and everything else, so it's pretty a big deal. And our discussions that we've had with Sublimity about this really acknowledge that, recognize it, and so, good work there, and there's going to be more work coming. I had a discussion with the Homeowners Association at Silver, Sullivan Springs back there, one knows where it is, that's, I think Mr. Centoni lives back there, and there is a discussion, they would like us to afford them some time to come talk to Council and do a presentation to Council, just about the nature of their predicament, if you will, back there. And so I would like Council at some point to put that on the agenda, maybe not, maybe not until March, but I at least want to give them some time to come tell us what's what, and tell us what they've done back there and what their challenge are. And after what we heard tonight, it might not be the best time to do that, but at least want them to have an opportunity to come do that and present to us. So I would ask that we put that on the agenda sometime, maybe the last part of March, if we could, just for a little presentation. Everyone good with that? Cool?
So, Mr. Mayor, yes, with all these nods, if you want to just have them contact me, and-
I will.
-we'll figure out the right date.
I will, they were asking me about the next Parks meeting, which I told them was tomorrow, that's probably not enough time for them, but let's talk about the next one. I will make sure they get ahold of you.
I'm sorry, do they want to go on to Parks meeting, or the Council?
They were asking how, what the best approach was, and I'm like, well, you could even do the Parks, and so I was, that's why I'm bringing it up, I didn't know the best approach for them to get in front of Council to really give a presentation, so, there's that.
Mr. Mayor, what if we have our Parks person bring back a report from that meeting to the Council?
Sure, you can do that, too, I think, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Centoni's mouth, but I think this is an issue that's been going on for a long time, and I think they really wish, they want to have someone receive what they have to say, listen to what they have to say, and I think now's a great time for us, so. There is a lot of potential, I think, for that site in the future, not necessarily right now, but in the future, maybe that's a potential natural area or something for the city, we'll see, see how it works, and that's what I want them to come talk about, so we'll do that. You know, at the meeting to extend the marijuana shop hours, I kind of was scratching my head during that meeting, and I couldn't understand why there was a neighborhood coming to us in opposition to the hours, extending the hours, because I thought that we had an ordinance in place that prohibited marijuana locations from being in a residential neighborhood within 200 feet. And so I kind of let it go at the time, but now I started going back and looking at it, and I think I would like the Council to bring that up again. I think that was struck from the ordinance back in 2019, but I think those folks that came to us that say, here's all the traffic coming through my neighborhood today, please don't extend the hours, I think those folks are owed a review again, and I think that in the future, I don't want to see a marijuana shop within 200 feet of a residential neighborhood, so I would like us to bring that up again. And if you need me to get the ordinance, Julie, I can find the, find the ordinance number, but I'm sure you guys have it.
I'm sure we can find that.
Okay, so I'd like to put that on the agenda in the future.
With the, just basically a discussion item to start?
Yeah, absolutely, specifically about the 200-foot rule now that's been eliminated. Now it's 1,000 feet of a school, and I think that's all, so I'd like, at least I'd like to have a discussion about it. And I think that's probably all, oh, one last thing, I want to acknowledge St. Mary's, they had an issue over there, not necessarily an issue, they had what I saw as a code concern, and I said, hey, could you guys address this real quick so no one gets hurt? And I asked them that on Friday, and by Monday it was gone, so, big deal there, because it was a situation where they very well could have had a child not in a great situation. Just acknowledging that they did a great job there, and knock that out for us. And I think that might be all I have, I already told you about the meeting for the Mayors on Monday. Thanks for doing the If I Were Mayor contest, and thanks for going to the LOC days. I think that's it. Luke, last chance, nothing? All right, with that, let's go home.